So to join us also.
Yes, that's the she just pointed.
Jose.
Okay, so let's get started. So good afternoon, everyone. My name is Neil Albert. I'm chairman of the Board of Commissioners. I'm calling this meeting to order. It's now 1:04 PM and today is Thursday, November 12. This is the regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia. Being held today via WebEx conferencing. If you're not speaking, please ensure you place your devices on mute. I want to thank you for that. As is our custom, at this time, I'd like for us to observe a moment of silence. Thank you. I'm just going to remind folks that if you're not speaking, please mute your devices. Or we're going to have to throw you off of this connection so that we can minimize any disruption. So please, let's mute our devices. So today's agenda is our regular agenda. We have invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website. Are those who would like to view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA website linked to Facebook. So we welcome your input on the matters of public concerns and offer you today an opportunity to express your views, including spirited debates on DCHA's decision by its management. However, so that we could have a smooth meeting, we ask that you abide by certain decorums, just like when we were able to meet in person. So for this virtual meeting, as I've mentioned a few times, I ask that you remain muted until you're requested to speak and that you do not use the chat feature to comment if it's not your time to speak. For the commissioners who are joining us, as we discussed a little earlier today, I will identify you and give you an opportunity to ask questions at the appropriate time. So I appreciate your collaboration ahead of time. At this time, I'm going to ask Alethia to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Council.
Present.
Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner Strickland there. Commissioner Ortiz-Gow.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Slower.
Present.
Commissioner Talloferro.
Present.
Commissioner Van Gasteri. Commissioner Van Gasteri, you're muted.
Present.
Commissioner Forrester.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio.
Present.
Thank you. And Chairman Albert.
Present.
Currently, you have eight commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to take some time to acknowledge the service of Nikisha Neal-Jones, who departed the board last month. We have a proclamation that we will present to her on behalf of the management staff and Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority. So again, Nikisha Neal, thank you so much for your service. So commissioners, at this time, I'd like you to consider the minutes of the October 14, 2020 board meeting. These minutes have been posted to your board book. At this time, are there any questions or comments or changes? Hearing now, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the October 14, 2020 meeting?
Motion.
It is motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second then. All of us in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Next, we will have the executive director's report. Mr. Garrett, I turn the mic over to you.
Commissioners, thank you and good afternoon, everyone, to the members of the public who are watching. Each month, my director's report is going to be based off of five components. And so those five components will be COVID response, property and operations and resident services, along with development and capital projects, stakeholder and community engagement, and workforce technology and other programs. From that, this is a pretty dense presentation on a monthly basis. So what I'll do is condense it and pull out pertinent parts as not many items have actually shifted from month to month. Some of them are continuous. So we'll go to the first slide. Okay, in regards to our current COVID response, as you can see on October 12, 2020, the housing managers and members of the housing management staff, PMO, returned to work on a staggered basis. And when I say staggered basis, coming back to the office three times a week and engaging residents by appointment only. The idea was to ensure that we had at least 25% of our workforce back to work, as was one of the concerns and one of the directives from the district as we started to launch our return to work coordination here at the DCHA. On October 27, for residents, our customers, we were able to do a soft launch of our new customer solution center, which I have to highlight, allowed us to open our waiting list, which is something that we haven't done in many years. We were able to open the waiting list and the waiting list is open now for single-family member households, for 200 vacant units that we have throughout the portfolio. So that's something that I need to raise up and lift, that we have actually opened our waiting list to some degree, but only for single-family member households. And we did that through our customer solution center by having those applicants come in to our building. On October 30, the DCHA participated in a return to work cluster session with the Deputy Mayor's Office for Economic Development, just to talk about Q and As and identify exactly where we were and where other agencies were in terms of return to work and map out possible timelines for that activity. In addition, we're continuing doing other activities within the building, which is workplace redesign, our COVID-19 training for all staff members and updating our COVID policy as things tend to change and are pretty fluid with the CDC and the Department of Health within the district. So we're maintaining that posture through our Office of Human Resources. GW, we are continuing our program with GW with our health screens here at the headquarters for not only our residents, but also our employees. We were giving away flu shots also. As I stated, through PMO, our management offices have reopened. It is something that I am excited about because it allows us to engage our residents directly. But it is again by appointment only. And we're talking about maintaining not only a safe distance for our staff members, but also for our residents themselves. But it was necessary for us to start to stagger our team back into the office over a period of time. But I will note that we did bring back our full maintenance staff back in July to full work requirements on a daily basis. And that started again back in July. And one reason I did that was because we needed to maintain our posture in terms of dealing with work orders, also especially emergency work orders, which is what we were only doing since March. We've since changed our posture on work orders and now have begun to deal with routine work orders within the agency and across the portfolio through the maintenance staff. Since March, what we generated in terms of just basic routine work orders were over 9,000 work orders since March to date. And so that created somewhat of a backlog for us because we were not entering apartments directly due to COVID. Since over the last 45 days, we have returned to regular work orders, starting with the backlog first. And we've actually been able to bring that 9,000 work order backlog down to about 2,500. And we'll probably move through that over the next month or so and then be able to start dealing with actual routine work orders that surface on a daily basis. So working through the backlog, trying to maintain as best as you possibly can, get through that, and then we'll be up to speed and we'll be neutral. So I think one of the big questions is what are we doing on a daily basis at our properties to maintain the quality of life and make improvements? So through our ESAP program, our energy conservation program, we've been dealing with work order repairs to our boiler systems, heating systems, and domestic hot water systems. But also, we've been able to put in new equipment as major capital improvements at many of our sites. So we know that all of our heating systems are operational as of today, and that's something that we'll monitor going forward. But again, what people ask us and many residents are concerned with is whether or not we're going to continue routine maintenance and upkeep of our buildings as we move through our transformation. And the answer is yes. Through Resident Services, we know that with our transformation and our transition and repositioning efforts, that residents are going to need support. Many residents are interested in purchasing homes. Many residents are interested in doing other things within their family structure for success. So Resident Services has been definitely engaging our customers across the portfolio, identifying what their needs are, what their requests are, and what their interests might be. So we've been holding virtual, COVID hasn't stopped us from doing that. We've just shifted it to, instead of doing it in person, we've been doing it virtually, offering workshops, credit workshops, and other strong partnerships with UDC and other stakeholders to engage our residents so that they can create a model for success and family self-sufficiency. Yes, we have started the season giving. That started in October, October 1. Up to now, we have actually raised $36,000. Our goal is $50,000 total before the holiday season really kicks in. And remember, that is to raise money, to offer opportunities, and to our families who are in need, whether it be through Christmas gifts, holiday gifts, clothing, foods, meals, whatever it may be during this season. That's our stance and that's what we're going to be doing. I do have to say that the way we raised the $36,000 was I committed to running a 5K every single day during the month of October. So for 31 days, I ran at least 3 miles, 3.1 miles a day, and we were able to raise the 36,000. I'm not going to run anymore. So the other form of fundraising will have to come from just me walking around and asking people to donate. And our last slide, last update will be with public safety. As you can see, this is from Halloween, where we did a virtual parade. But we did try to allow for social distancing with masks being worn by our officers that might have come into contact with residents. But the idea was to show that we're not just law enforcement vehicle, but we are also a community policing effort. And from this, we've been able to engage our residents. I know this has been a point of concern during many of our meetings. We're upping the ante, being more visible, more interactive with our community. And next month at the Ops meeting, we're going to be able to showcase a software program that we have on tap that will be able to give us data and information on exactly what our offices are doing on a daily basis in terms of patrolling the site. That information can be used not only for you when you ask us questions, but also can be used and shared with MPD on how we can better police the community. And that really, Mr. Chair, ends my report. The entire 47 pages will be uploaded to your diligent page. And I think we'll also be able to put it online for residents to look at in its entirety. But I skipped around just in terms of, because of time, and created a more brief report. But we did cover all five performance goals that you have given to the agency.
Thank you so much, Director Garrett. I am going to call council members and see if they, commissioners rather, and see if they have enough questions that they'd like to ask. Let's start with Commissioner Van Gasteri. Any questions on the report? Commissioner, you're muted.
Come back to me right now. I have to recuperate.
Okay, no problem.
Learn to see at the door.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Commissioner Council, any questions on the report?
The COVID piece, what is our numbers this month for our staff in the building and on some of the property sites? Has the number changed? Has it ever gotten higher?
Sorry, the number for exposures for our staff has risen to approximately 185 exposures, with still only 25 being tested as positive for employees. So we've taken the necessary precautions for anyone in terms of contact tracing, for anyone who might have come into contact with an employee who was exposed to a COVID-19. For the residence component, that's a little different, and I'll have to get that from Hammer, unfortunately, because what happens, commissioners, is that we don't try to, we don't maintain that information because we can only gain those totals when we're contacted by an employee, I mean by a resident. Other than that, we don't know exactly how many individuals on our properties might have contracted COVID. And that falls into HIPAA rules also. So we can't ask the question only if someone advises us. But I'll check with Hammer to see whether or not we've got anything back from the Department of Health.
So walk us through how are we playing it safe as far as a staff hazard? What do we do?
If staff has it, we start contact tracing internally, identifying exactly who the staff person has come into contact with, whether they've come in contact with other employees, their colleagues, and/or any resident. And from that point, we make a determination who needs to be notified, who needs to be sent home for a 14-day period or what have you. If we feel as though residents have been exposed, then we'll take the necessary steps to advise those individuals to see a healthcare professional. We also go into deep cleaning also. Depending upon the individual's job responsibility and where they've been, we deep clean that particular location appropriately so that if anyone else has to use a vehicle, anyone has to use that office, they're not subject to any type of infection or germs.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Strickland, any questions from you on the report?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Slower?
No questions. I just appreciate the thorough update. Thank you.
Thank you. Van Gasteri, I'm going to get back to you. I'm coming back to you. Are you ready?
No questions. Move on.
Great. Commissioner Forrester, any questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Fauchekio, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Great. No questions for me, but I just want to join Commissioner Slower in saying thank you so much for the very thorough report. And I hope that you can make the report available to the public also.
Yeah, we'll make sure we upload it.
Great. All right, so we have one resolution to consider today. It is our custom and our practice rather, that before the resolution is considered, that we give the public an opportunity to weigh in on the resolution. There are six folks that have signed up to provide testimony on the resolution. As is our practice here, if you are a resident, a public housing resident, you get five minutes to speak on the topic. If you're a non-resident, you get three minutes to speak on the topic. So again, we're going to try and observe our time limits. I am going to ask that we allow Patricia Bishop to bring testimony.
Can you just move to Yelly?
Ms. Bishop? Okay, let's come back to Ms. Bishop. Deana Walker? Mr. Sousa, could you admit Ms. Walker?
You're unmuted, Ms. Walker. Go ahead.
All right, I'm sorry. I stepped on, I was taking a phone call. I'm sorry. What did I miss just now? Was there for me?
No. So you signed up to speak on the Greenleaf resolutions. I wanted to give you the opportunity to do so at this time.
Oh, I didn't sign up.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to, move back to Patricia Bishop.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yeah.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Albert and the Board of Directors. My name is Patricia Bishop. I'm a resident of Greenleaf Midrife. I have lived here for over 15 years, and not only am I speaking for myself, I'm also speaking for the tenants of Greenleaf. I had the opportunity to participate in a virtual meeting with Tyrone Garrett and Greenleaf residents and staff involved in the redevelopment. I appreciate some of my concerns being answered during the meeting. And I would like, I would look forward to seeing them put in black and white, especially with discerning all of 493 tenants. And the opportunity to return and no displacement out of the community. I also want all utilities to be included and free pockets and more homes available for low-income residents in the new development. This pandemic, even prior to the beginning, has set difficult on Greenleaf residents. We have been overlooked and forgotten and neglected, things that should be done to upkeep our property and maintain a quality of life. Hazardous attempts to all. I am trying to raise the concern about the ventilation system not being cleaned for years. Us breathing in rotten droppings and all kinds of fungus from the heat pouring through the unclean vents that are in the halls and connected to our bathrooms. Director Tyrone Garrett, you promised at the ASC meeting that our vents were professionally clean. You must have meant Greenleaf senior. Our vents at the Midrife have not been cleaned. This doesn't help our living or cleaning environment as we fight for our lives during this pandemic, especially people who have heart and respiratory problems, adults and children, which you are well aware of. Our lives should be priority in the Housing Authority. Therefore, they should be no installing of smoke detectors in the building of Greenleaf during this pandemic. You should save them for the new building because it may expose risk to virus and other insects, I'm sorry, going in and out of the units. We do not know who has COVID and who does not. Please remember that Black Lives Matter put a stop to the installment of the new smoke detectors and force on eliminating the rotten problem, the mold, the fungus, asbestos, mildew, tensions that go on in the maintenance of the building. By doing this, I believe that you would be getting yourself into good trouble. I have been saying this, saying to us that our lives and conditions would be improved upon the insteads. They have gotten worse. When it is health and well-being and quality of life of Greenleaf going to be a priority, would you all accept a unit in the building knowing that these will be your living conditions? Would you want your children or loved ones living in the rotten infested building and exposed to lead or ask to move in a property that is worse? Please improve our living conditions and redevelopment in the future process. We want to continue the concern and engagement of the full transformation during this procedure. However, we are here now in the present and in respect to our needs and the things that can be done to upkeep the maintenance of Greenleaf to be done in a timely manner. You can also take this to the mayor or whoever you need to take it to to get more funds to improve the living conditions. Please do better by Greenleaf residents. I also attached pictures of the vent outside of my door and a letter about the installing of the smoke detectors. And I very much would appreciate y'all's comments. Hello?
Thank you so much, Ms. Bishop, for your testimony here today. Next, we will call on Rick Bardash. He's a Southwest resident. Rick, you have three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Great. Okay, good afternoon. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Rick Bardash. I'm a member of the Greenleaf Advisory Council. I spoke at the last meeting of the commissioners a month ago. And so I was asked by my fellow members to respond today as well. And I'm happy to report that we've been very pleased with the progress over the last month. Couple of weeks after the last meeting of the Board of Commissioners, we met with Executive Director Garrett and his staff on a WebEx call. And it was a great meeting, very open, honest. We had a lot of questions and we got answers and commitments, and we really appreciate that. It's a great first start. We also know that Director Garrett met with the residents of Greenleaf, had two different meetings last week with the members of the parts of Greenleaf, and that's great. And we got the commitment that DC Housing will be meeting with the residents every month throughout the development of the Greenleaf and that they'll be meeting with our advisory council every quarter. And we look forward to having a next meeting in the near future so that we can hear some of the details of the plans of the Greenleaf Development Partners, District Partners, I'm sorry. Yesterday, we just, and apologize, it was just only yesterday, but we sent a one-page letter to Chairman Albert and Director Garrett, and we hope that all of the commissioners received a copy of that. We just tried to put down in writing a couple of our concerns. But mainly, we support at this point in time the passage of Resolution 2020 so that the process can get going and that once the authority is given to the executive director, that he'll be able to meet with the residents and with us as scheduled and give us a lot of details as to the plans and how the negotiations are going. So we wanted to just send that one-page letter to put a few things in writing. I think that's all I need to say at this point. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. And of course, I'm available for any questions if anyone would have those. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Rick. We appreciate you taking time out today. Next is William Jordan.
Good afternoon. My name's William Jordan. I'm a Ward One resident and I'm a member of Ms. High's council at Park Morton Equity Plan Board. I'm testifying on the Greenleaf matter because of the parallels between the promises that are going to be made for Greenleaf and the promises that were made under NCI and new communities for Park Morton. And based on my experiences at Park Morton, there's no way you can come out with the outcome that is being proposed because if you couldn't do it at Park Morton, it's unlikely that it can happen in the residents' interest at Greenleaf unless you do what we are recommending for Park Morton that I will get into later testimony. But today, I would advise that when Director Garrett is given the opportunity to negotiate with the developers, that the Greenleaf Advisory Board or some entity controlled by the residents be given equity status as a part of the development team. And that be based on the Park Morton Equity Plan that we put together in Park Morton to try to save that project from the incompetence. So I've looked at, you know, pin rod. So I've looked at, you know, Penrose and EYA and Bazuto. They're not developers that specialize in racial equity and equitable development. They develop high-end projects that are designed to meet the goals of their investors. So the residents are investors. They need to have a stake in this project. So I urge the negotiations include whether you use a TOPA model or some other model, resident equity in this project or the project not move forward. No equity, there's no way the lofty goals can be made in the residence's interest. Because if you don't have equity, you're not at the table, you can't influence, and you can't take responsibility to assure you get the outcome that's been promised. So we know from New Communities, the pie in the sky of developers aren't going to happen unless residents are fully empowered. Thank you.
I would like to ask Mr. Jordan a question. Mr. Jordan, since you've been doing this work, and it's been a very long time, and I would just like for this to be placed on record. As you know, I was a former organizer with Washington in the City Self-Health, which was WISH. And what I don't understand, and this goes with organizers, in the District of Columbia, we always have people coming to our community and they talk TOPA, etc. at all. I just don't understand how a group of people can live in deplorable conditions that they have identified. And organizations, just like Empowerment DC, it could be WIN, it could be your organization, it could be ONE DC. I don't see any of you all doing the model that I saw in this town under the Office of Tenant, the Office of the Tenant Council used to be with a crazy argument. And at that time, they had rent strikes. Residents who live in deplorable conditions, whether they live in public housing or whether they live in the private sector. Our residents receive equity because A, our money went to the court and that's screwed. B, when the unit was completed, I received an interest check. In the case of Berry Farms, four hundred and some units and everybody living deplorable, correct me if I'm wrong, not one resident paid their rent to register. Could you imagine if I lived in Berry Farms and the Housing Authority could never fix my house, but I was paying rent for twelve years? There's a difference when a resident walks out the door with one hand, they have a local or a federal voucher in one hand, and in the other hand, I have the interest money from living in my deplorable condition. Is there a reason why we all longed for rent strikes or the influence or the teacher resident about rent strikes? I just want to know for the record from a man of your caliber who has been around for a long time, sir.
Okay, I'll respond. Yes, I'll respond briefly. Every tool in the toolbox that can be put before the residents must be put before the residents. And just like any developer goes and hires experts to help them, residents with the proper tools, including the dollars, can do the very same thing. So whether it requires a rent strike in order to get your position or requires the Housing Authority and other entities such as DMPA to just do the right thing.
And all residents put their money into the court register, which has not been used in the District of Columbia since gentrification has impacted public housing.
Correct, as well as foreign cooperatives and other ways to invest. So there are many, many tools. And I think it's time to use those tools. Greenleaf and of course, Park Morton that I will speak to later is a perfect opportunity. And they'll learn, just like everyone else. We mess up. New communities have been messing up for twelve years. We keep going, so the residents mess up. We just keep on going till we learn.
Okay, thanks, William. Thanks, Commissioner Van Gisry. Bill, it's over.
I appreciate the time and I appreciate your, your comments, Mr. Jordan. I want to echo or build on something you, you, you hit on, which I think is critically important to understand is when you look at a real estate deal, you look at who the investors are and you're pointing out that the investors from our perspective in this deal are the current residents of Greenleaf. And we need to consider them as our investors as we move forward this process. And I'll point to Resolution 1901 is something we did two years ago to try to inform a path forward as we redevelop. And Exhibit A number five speaks to this, which says, "To the extent that DCHA determines that self-development is financially infeasible and otherwise not advisable, DCHA shall seek to procure development partners that have the strongest alignment organizationally and financially with DCHA's mission of providing decent, safe, and affordable housing and will structure deals that allow for the maximum reinvestment of economic benefit of any deal into the production of affordable housing units and to support DCHA's mission." This is what you're talking about. We need to make sure at the front of this process that we have honored this commitment from the agency to seek out these partners. And that's part of what a lot of the members on this board are trying to find out now versus later. What are the priorities? Our priorities are clear. The development partners' priorities are to make money. How do we make sure our priority stays front and front and center? This is the time to make sure that that's when this happens. So I appreciate you bringing that into this conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. William, as usual, thanks for your input. Next, we're going to move to Daniel Del Palago. Daniel? Is Daniel with us today?
He is not on right now, sir.
We'll get back to him later. Let's move on to Bridget McDermott.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bridget McDermott. I'm a member of St. Augustine Catholic Church and St. Augustine is one of the thirty-eight member institutions of the Washington Interfaith Network. WIN is committed to training and developing and working with neighborhood and community leaders to accomplish positive change. I, along with clergy and other leaders from WIN congregations, am part of the WIN Public Housing Work Group. Our work group also includes leaders from resident and tenant associations who represent public housing residents across DC. I'm here today because we at WIN are concerned about the impact of resolutions like 2020 on public housing residents. So we are recommending that the Commissioners ask DCHA to accept a friendly amendment to 2020. We recommend that Resolution 2020 offer public housing resident representatives a seat at the table during the negotiations with development partners. Why not let public housing representatives comment on deliverables like the number of units, the size of units, location, timing? And why not do this as the negotiations are ongoing rather than when the operating agreement or master development agreement are all fait accompli? Does this recommendation sound surprising? Well, it did to me at first. But I was quickly reminded that it has been done before and with great success. Four conditions forced Ruffaro Jenkins and Cynthia Eglund from their home in Parkway Overlook in Ward Eight. These two former residents fought successfully to have Parkway Overlook rebuilt as two hundred and twenty units of affordable housing. During the development, Jenkins and Eglund worked with DCHA incorporating resident feedback in project decisions. We also recommend the Commissioners study the redevelopment of public housing in San Francisco and build into our process here in DC the same protections and requirements, which includes consistent and transparent tenant involvement from start to finish. Having ironclad written protection for tenant involvement is essential. And as always, WIN continues to advocate for build first. The WIN Public Housing Group strongly recommends that Director Garrett and his team include resident representatives in the discussions and negotiations for the operating and master development agreements. This inclusion should be standard where DCHA is engaged in redevelopment, particularly in RAD and Section 18 negotiations. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thanks so much, Ms. McDermott, for your, for your comments and, and we try to.
Ms. McDermott, I have a question.
Of course, did I finish?
Oh, I apologize.
So I was just saying thank you so much, Ms. McDermott, for your comments and really, I liked the suggestion of resident engagement. I know that's part of what's planned ongoing for this development project. But I really appreciate WIN's input on this project and other projects. So I just want to put that on the record.
Ms. McDermott, as I'm stating, as a matter of fact, I just received an email from an individual from WIN. As you know, WIN is Potomac Gardens organizers. Right. I have reached out to WIN because what I have tried to do and through my board is that every public housing community need to be assigned an attorney. Each and every one of us. I've reached out to the advocate community. I haven't had a response yet. So I'm reaching out to you to help me so that we can get an attorney for every resident housing. And this is not just for an executive board. And what happened is that the residents, because see, you have residents who have degrees, no degrees, mother with, and they don't have a clue because information is not getting filtered to them. And as we move through 2020 into 2021, it is essential that every household is notified and have a vote, just like they did in this election. So what I'm asking you to do when you leave here is to have Amy or somebody to call me and please help me because I was trying to get this meeting this month because I am the Chair of the Resident Service Resident Initiative Committee. And this is not nothing new. So if you could really help me and have a group of attorneys to get a hold of Lethia so that these attorneys can speak with our committee to make a commitment and we can learn which, which attorneys. I'm requesting Rebecca for Potomac Gardens because Rebecca has done a lot of workshops with us. And I've asked every public housing resident council, including Greenleaf 203, none of them listens to me. No one should have been talking, period, until they had that attorney. So moving forward, and if we, if you can help me at this point, because see, I'm not running this, I'm not, I'm not seeking reelection. I've done my, I've done my journey. But I want to leave as my legend to educate, inform, with clarification, understanding, transparency, ethics, morals, and character, that our residents in every household will be able to understand and identify their issues and speak of their household. Because I dare you, as a group of people, speak for me when you haven't even spoken with me and you're telling me that you're speaking with Southwest leadership. Southwest leadership, no disrespect, live in our communities. And so some of the problems we already had down Southwest would not even exist. So if you help me at that point, we would be ahead of the game.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
If I could just respond very quickly.
Ms. McDermott, very quickly.
Yes, Commissioner Van Gisry, we completely agree. We are, we've been trying. It is not an easy process, but it is, it is something we're already engaged in. And we're, we're trying to get representation for each of the public housing complexes we're working with. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for working with me.
Commissioner Forrester.
Hello, Matt.
Commissioner Forrester.
This is Ms. Bishop, Matt.
I'm sorry, was someone speaking?
Hello, this is Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop, you, 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 you can't speak at this time. We, we have a lot of other folks. We're going to get back to you if we, if we have time. I want to, Commissioner Forrester wanted to ask the question, make a, provide some input. So it's her turn.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the work that was done to go back to the community to get their, their responses to the proposal to move forward. I wanted to directly ask, I think Patricia, who's a resident, about she, she laid out the things that she wanted to see in moving forward, but she asked for it to be, that there be an agreement that, that we will build first and the one-to-one replacement will happen. So I wanted to ask her, does she feel like she's received that? What, what do the other constituents that are part of the resident council want from us before we move this forward?
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Go ahead and respond.
I wanted to respond because when they first were the developers here, I spoke up for not only myself, residents also. I even had them walk out several times. I mentioned about people cannot understand what is going on. So they needed attorneys. I did speak up and I did offer attorneys and I did have them walk out when it was not clear or respectful of our request. That's why I continue to be an activist. That's why I continue to ask for fair and equal housing. Black lives matter and get in some good trouble and I will continue to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Jose Ortiz?
Yes, it's actually regarding Ms. Bishop also and I, and I, and I agree that one of the things, I appreciate the picture regarding to me, it's simply about the health and I think I agree with what's going on and for sure for Greenleaf. And also if, if Director Garrett take on about really looking at events and that should be like a, that can happen, the events and based on the DUC system and the midrives is. So that's something that I see that in action that probably requires some, some quick movement in that piece.
Totally agree with you, Commissioner. So let's call our next guest, Koi McKinney. Koi, I see you. You're on mute.
Sorry, I'm juggling comp plan and testifying here. But yeah, I'll, I'll be brief. I'm not a resident of Greenleaf, but I've been in Southwest for the past ten years. I know it's early on in the redevelopment process, but I just want to emphasize how important it is that I think the redevelopment of Greenleaf is done right and justice is at the core of it. Since I've moved here, we've been promised many things from the comp plan, from the small area plan, and many of those promises have gone unkept. The, our small area plan says that we should be an exemplary model of equity and inclusion, yet all we've seen is gentrification and displacement and high housing costs over the past ten years. So for me, the promise of build first must be kept. The promise for one-for-one unit replacement must also be kept. I'm also, I, I don't know the details on this, but I hope that the same number of bedrooms will also be kept because one of the issues that we're having here is that we're not getting a whole lot of three-bedroom plus units. And so I know that Greenleaf has a lot of three and four-bedroom units. And so I hope that those will also be in the redevelopment. So yeah, I just want to emphasize that there is a growing group. I'm part of a group called Southwest Action. And we're taking more of a focus on what's going on in Southwest. And Greenleaf is definitely at the high, at the top of our list of projects that we want to ensure that, you know, justice is being done with that. So just, just to let you all know that, you know, there's a group of people that are watching this and we, we're demanding that justice be done for Greenleaf's residents.
I appreciate, appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that you're multitasking and keeping an eye on the comp plan. Maybe you can put some updates in the chat if you have the opportunity because I'm keenly interested in it also. Thanks so much for all of you who brought a testimony on this resolution. And I promise you that we're going to make sure that the administration adheres to the requests that were made, particularly for one-to-one replacement, build first, and to have the residents at the table every step of the way. At this time, I'm going to ask the Executive Director, Mr. Garrett, to just give us again, a reminder, refresher, really quick refresher on where we are today with the Greenleaf development.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, and Commissioners and to the public. While Mr., was Mr. Jordan was speaking, he referenced, he made reference to our potential development partners and their interests in affordable housing. Some, I can say this, some housing developers have a mission. To develop affordable housing. That is part of their goal. And although they are profit driven, they are mission oriented. And the one example I wanted to throw up really quick, Mr. Jordan made reference to homeownership. And I can show you a project in which one of the development partners actually created a homeownership opportunity. And it's not something that I'm just saying is actually real and residents from that particular public housing community are actually living in those units. Kegel, do you have that link? You can throw up real quick. And Mr. Chair, this is somewhat off of our presentation. I just. Thought it was important that people see this. That's homeownership home ownership opportunity in Long Branch, New Jersey. The development partner actually was Pinrose. And they were committed to what the residents asked for, which was an opportunity for actual equity. As Mr. Jordan is talking about, through the creation of homeownership units. So they do have a history of working with the residents, and I believe they will continue to do so if we're given the opportunity to move forward and negotiate with them. Thank you, Kegel. So over the last, the last, you know. 10 years, last five years, we've been talking about, DCHA has been talking about the Greenleaf opportunity. And this comes at a unique time for us. And this is something, Commissioners, I didn't say to you during the ground bag session, but it's a reality for us. Based on things that have happened since March, not only with the pandemic, but the social unrest and how we've been dealing with vulnerable populations. We have seen the extraordinary impact that it's had on communities like ours. So it's my charge and the charge of my administration to ensure that the inequities that have been placed on many members from our community stop. And one way to stop it is to begin with what our mission is. And our mission is to provide quality housing. Let's get away from the HUD speak about decent, safe and affordable. We want to prepare and create quality housing for our residents. There is no misnomers about that. There is only one way to do that. In our particular instance, in our particular case, when I came on board, I immediately identified that our housing stock was obsolete, not only here at Greenleaf, but throughout the whole entire portfolio. And in order to remedy that, we have to take steps to move the agency forward, to evolve, to create opportunities for new construction, to create opportunities for rehabilitation, which will directly impact our residents. And the idea of impacting our residents is to. Do it in a positive manner, to have their input, to have their participation, to listen to them. And so I've been listening to them since I came on board through my town hall meetings and through all the other meetings that I've engaged with our residents. And I've heard what they've said to us. And I've heard that they want quality housing. I heard they want us to act quickly. And in order for us to act quickly, you have to let us out of the gate. And this is one of those instances, Commissioners, where all we're asking at this point in time is the opportunity to negotiate with the development team. Not to make any final conclusions or final decisions, but bring those things back to you in conjunction with consultation with the residents and other stakeholders within the community. So again, Commissioners, we're asking you again to reconsider the resolution for the future redevelopment of Greenleaf. The last time we were before you, the big thing that came up was resident engagement and participation. And having them, having those residents, our residents, our customers, the people that we champion for, participate in the discussion and also be brought up to speed as to where we were. And we did that in a few different ways. We were able to engage the residents over the last three weeks in two meetings, one with the family site and one with the resident. And one with the family site and one with the senior site. In doing that, we listened to their questions and we garnered, you know, garnered information from them, what they wanted to see and how they wanted to see it happen. Now, some of the things that they want to occur somewhat premature for us. Because right now, this resolution is only asking that we have the opportunity to negotiate with the partner, with the development team, nothing more. And then from there, we would take additional steps to move forward. But one thing I can say, and I said it to the chairman and I said it to the entire board about an hour ago, was that we start. Our starting point is build first. Our starting point is replacement units. That's where we start. And then we move forward from there. If there is no discussion, if there is no commentary about the opportunity for the housing authority to develop replacement units. The total number of replacement units that we need or to build first, then that's a nonstarter for us and we have to move on. But we need the opportunity to have that discussion with the development team. And what they presented to us thus far, the selection of the panel has been made and the recommendation given to me to bring to you as the board, that this team will fulfill that mission. Now, it doesn't say that we close our eyes to it. It doesn't say that we walk away and let them handle it. No, we are partners. And that partnership includes the people that we champion for, which are our residents. So I also have Andre Gould, who is the project manager, along with Central on San Fran, who is the senior VP for OCP, I'm sorry, Capital Programs. And then we also have Jose Sousa, who is the senior VP for Public Affairs and Communications. Together as a team, we've created this particular strategy of engagement with the residents. And as Mr. Bardash said, we've committed to engaging not only his group, but first and foremost, the residents. On a monthly basis and then his group quarterly. Those meetings will be set up this in the month of December. We've already had a date actually put together on December 10th for a resident engagement. Our goal is to answer every single question that we possibly can and to bring them along for the ride. The idea is to have the potential development team engage with everyone, sit down at the table, listen to what the residents have to say. And include that in whatever negotiations that we move forward with. I understand that this is a great monumental step for the agency. In that this will be something that my administration will be able to see from beginning to end. This is not a transaction or a redevelopment deal that was began before I came on board or members of my OCP team or members of any of our departments. This is not something that we take lightly and we take this responsibility on behalf of our residents very strongly. We're not here to try and go back over what we discussed in the previous dev mods or in the previous board meetings. Because in my estimation, we're past that particular point. We are ready and prepared to answer any questions that you have as a board. But we also understand and keep reiterating that this is only the first bite at the apple, our first opportunity to get out the gate. And as you've heard from other individuals who have commented from the public, people want to see this project move forward, but they want us to be deliberate and they want us also to be cautious. You are the watchdog as the Board of Commissioners to ensure that the administration does what it's supposed to do in terms of renegotiating with and negotiating with this developer. Also, in that vein, we have to come back to you on multiple occasions to discuss and talk about exactly where we are in the transaction. Meaning that at the same time, we're working to negotiate with the developer, we also have to create submissions to HUD. And those submissions to HUD have to come back to you also. So this isn't one of those situations where you give us a blank check and we run away. No, we have to continue to come back, not only to you, but also to the residents on a regular basis and engage. Now, for me, this means this is going to be the model, not only for Greenleaf, but other redevelopment opportunities or rehabilitation opportunities that we pursue in the future. This is going to be the way we handle our business. We're going to be truly transparent each and every time we walk forward with an opportunity such as this. And we know based on conversations with HUD that some of the Commissioners have had and some of the stakeholders that we brought to the table have had in listening to HUD themselves. Time is not on our side. Our buildings, we know, are over 50 years old. They are in decay. And we need to have some expediency to our method and our mode of operation. In doing that, we're not going to neglect the residents as they exist now. We're going to do everything in our power to maintain the buildings and the structures as they exist. But we do know that the capital that's necessary to do that, we don't have. We also know we don't necessarily have time on our side. And so that's something that we must consider. And that's why I'm appealing to you as a Board of Commissioners to allow this agency and the administration to move forward with just this one step. I know Ms. Bishop talked about some issues and problems at her building. The one thing that I can tell you, we talk about capital improvements continuing to go on. I think in my presentation, I showed where we were working on one of the heating systems. Well, that's actually the heating system at Greenleaf. And that's why we haven't been able to do the vent system yet, because we're putting in installing the new air. The technical idea, I guess the technical would be the boiler and HVAC system there at Greenleaf. So we can't change out the vents and the filters just yet until we have that apparatus, that piece of equipment fully installed, which should be done in the next couple of weeks. So we will get to cleaning those vents appropriately over time. So I don't want anyone in their mind to think that we're going to neglect our residents by any stretch of the imagination and stop working on a daily basis. Because we believe we have a redevelopment opportunity in our future. No, we have to do the same level of work to suffice our customers on a daily basis to ensure they have a proper quality of life. So I don't know, Central, if you want to go through the presentation with Andre or Jose, you want to have anything to add. I really went off script. Because I believe what we have in front of us is a clear opportunity to make some type of history and change the game here at the DCHA.
Director Garrett, I'd like to take the opportunity, one, to echo your bedrock commitment to build first and one for one replacement. And but linked to that, I also think I want to add to the sense of urgency, why we need to move forward. Is that these private development partners, whether it be the team that we're bringing forward, which has identified to build first sites. But as well, this would hold true for other teams that have also been in the process to date. Can't hold on these sites as build first sites for Greenleaf indefinitely. If Greenleaf is not, if we are not able to move forward and enter into negotiations in order to secure those sites as build first sites. They will move forward on a different program that is not inclusive of Greenleaf. And we definitely don't want that to occur. We want the ability to to secure these sites for residents. And to uphold the pledge that we've made for both build first units as well as being able to bring back one for one replacement. For of all 493 units. We did cover a lot of what was discussed, but I think Andre may want to cover just a little bit of the history very quickly. And how our engagement over the last few years has been baked into our RFP process with the to incorporate the resident priorities. And then I think Jose can talk a little bit about the actual recent engagement and our next steps and how and what that resident and community engagement would look like.
Thank you, Central. I just want to briefly go over the timeline. We've been working on this project since 2015. And we began that master planning process with the residents. We actually established a Greenleaf Advisory Council that was made up of Greenleaf resident council leaders as well as the ANCs. To help us get information out to their constituents as we move through the master planning process. We put out an RFQ in 2018, just to get a request for qualifications for developers. There were about 10 respondents. And prior to moving to a RFP, we actually met with that Greenleaf Advisory Group and made sure that we incorporated many of the. Master planning and engagement ideas that came forth during that period prior to actually releasing the RFP. Once we released an RFP in 2019, there were five proposals received. We brought those respondents out to the public in December of 2019. And they spoke to the residents as well as community stakeholders were invited to that meeting. And we took their questions at that time and we used those and we incorporated them before we went to a best and final stage with the top four proposals. And that group is Greenleaf District Partners, who we'd like to move forward with negotiations with that team. I'd also like to turn it over to Jose so he could speak briefly about the engagement. But prior to doing that, I want to remind you of the principles that were part of the RFP, which was build first. Greenleaf District Partners and their proposal had two build first options. One for one replacement was a part of the RFP and Greenleaf District Partners, their proposal has one for one replacement of all 493. Public housing units plus additional affordable units. Their overall program allows us to minimize resident moves because they have different types of phasing options. And that's how Greenleaf District Partners responded. All of their units are located in the Southwest neighborhood as well as their build first options. Their proposal had a mix of affordable and market rate units. And they also had a design that increased public safety by providing eyes on the street. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Jose so he can talk about. Our engagement.
Thank you, Andre. Can you go back one more slide? Thank you. So Commissioners and attendees, thank you so much. Jose Sousa here with DCHA. Just since we last met in October, a lot has happened. The meetings and conversations that have been held with residents, with members of the advisory board group and others. Much like a lot of the virtual engagement we've been doing since the pandemic began, we use the same model that we've been deploying. Last couple of months, which is we provided hard copies of the presentations, similar to the one that you're viewing today, actually, to all the residents. We called each and every resident household, informed them about the meeting, answered questions that they had, made sure that they understood how to connect. And additionally, our team also provided briefings to several members of ANC 6D that were part of the Resident Advisory Group, conversations with Councilmember Charles Allen and his team. Project website for the site, dcha.us/greenleaf, where anybody who wanted to see the presentation decks that are being shared could view them. In addition, and Andre, if you can just quickly show the next slide for me really quickly. We also included the recordings that took place of the meetings, much like the way we record the meetings that are held with the board on a monthly basis. We recorded the meetings that were held with residents, uploaded them to our YouTube page and posted those links back to the project site and sent them back out to residents. This is important in case the resident couldn't have taken part to view the meeting itself, they would have the ability to view what was discussed. Ms. Bishop earlier brought up the need to put the answers down in black and white, and we completely agree. And that's what's going on right now. There were several dozen questions that were posed over the course of each of these meetings. Meetings were attended by more than 40 residents at each of the days we held them. Our team is currently creating written responses to all the questions asked. Those responses will accompany the new presentation materials and instructions that will be distributed and shared back to residents ahead of the next meeting, which is scheduled for Thursday, December 10th. Again, we've committed to monthly meetings with residents throughout this process. We've committed to quarterly meetings with the advisory group throughout the process. We're trying to make sure that everybody understands this is a resident led effort, resident led development. We understand that there's a lot of stakeholders. Who have a vested interest in what happens in their community. We know that that vested interest needs to be primarily informed by what residents are interested in, what residents are asking for. And what role residents will play throughout this. Our commitment to meeting monthly exemplifies the whole process. We'll be providing updates on every step of the process, the overview. Of what the regulatory process is for HUD on a Section 18 demo dispo, you know, regulatory process that exists for this. But to continue to make sure that residents have the opportunity to bring their feedback directly to the proposed development team, to hear from them and what is most important for them. In the future iteration of this development, passive space, active space, all of them. So that's what we'll be doing over the course of the next several months, honestly, over the course of the next several years. Next slide, Andre. And so, I mean, just that was my quick summary. We've done with resident engagement. We'll be continuing to do resident engagement. And with this, I just wanted to show that we obviously have already scheduled the next meeting with the residents. We'll be scheduling the next meeting with the advisory group after that as well. A key part of that is the ability to include the proposed development team. Mr. Garrett, I'll take it back to you just in terms of sort of what our ask is at this point for this board to allow us to continue to do this important work.
Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Andre. Thank you, Central. So Commissioners, right now, this resolution is merely to give us the opportunity to negotiate with a potential, with a proposed development team, nothing more. And during that time, we're going to be talking about negotiating out within a period of 180 days. And as we have on this particular slide, we talk about our Greenleaf meeting with the residents. And then we have our advisory board meeting. And as Jose stated, we're going to continue those particular processes all the way through to the end of this particular opportunity. I see there was a comment from Ms. Walker, and I just want to address that. I can't speak for what was done. speak for what was done, um, prior to my administration in terms of discouraging resident leadership, but I can say, Commissioners, I met with, um, um, Ms. Walker, um, just on, uh, Tuesday, actually. It was Tuesday. Um, I met with Ms. Walker and the conversation that we were talking about was how do we involve, um, resident opportunities who, for economic empowerment within this particular process? I think that goes to what Mr. Jordan was discussing and talking about earlier on. Um, so this opportunity for us doesn't just start at just bricks and mortar. This goes a lot deeper. And as I pointed out to Ms. Walker, the opportunity to create resident-owned businesses, the opportunity for, um, residents to actually participate in a higher level, not just section three jobs, um, but the opportunity to possibly, um, fill some voids in the community retail establishments or whatever it may be, whatever the residents want to see will be a part of this entire negotiation and process, um, um, as we, as we try to finalize some ideas and concepts.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Director Garrett and team. Um, I am going to open it up for questions from our Commissioners, but I will actually call our Commissioners. This is our first round. Uh, so you have up to five minutes between, uh, between your questions and responses, uh, from the staff in this round. Uh, you, there's, there's no obligation, uh, for you to ask a question, but I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to do so. Uh, let's start with Commissioner Council.
Good afternoon, everyone. This here is, is a good piece of meat for us to really carve out and have a good, uh, outlook with it. To see all of the constituents and everybody in, and adjacent to the property. We know where the property lie. We know we're in a good space. People want build first. People want to make sure that they get the same amount of numbers coming back and bedroom size as well as, uh, all of the residents be able to return even the number of units that you're taking away, that you officially bring them back. Even to hear some of the residents speaking on them having the equity partnership. Um, is there some way that we can amend this resolution and add that end of assurance for, uh, this resolution? I mean, we've been doing a lot of cutting pace and been able to do a lot of things before, um, we resolve or this goes into a vote. Um, Director Garrett, within your purview, how much can you share of being ready for brick and mortar? Is there a way that we can build first? If not, can you tell us why not?
I'm trying to, that's a, Greg, I just, is that a, is that a, that's a negotiation point, Commissioner Council to some, to some degree. Um, and I want to be very mindful. I, I, what I want to say is that wh- what I rea-, what I stated and now reiterating what Central, um, put on the, on the table for us is that, um, build first was a part of the RFP. That meant they had to show us that there was capacity and a way to get to that particular point, um, that there was a build first opportunity. And from this particular team, they have shown us that, that, um, that's the, 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 the best way I can put it. When we start to negotiate out, we can start to add timelines to that particular, um, component and come back and be able to advise not only you, but also the residents themselves as to whether or not, um, it works. And what we'll be talking about, you know, um, Andre talked about phases, you know, that'll impact exactly how many, how many opportunities for residential units come back immediately, or will it be over the course of two phases, or will it be over the course of three phases? We don't know, but we want the opportunity to discuss that in further detail, um, with not only the development team, but also, um, the residents themselves. Because that's going to impact what you're talking about. Negotiations will impact just that.
Within knowing what the other two administrators, administrations have done, and we are behind, we're 10 years behind in some of this development. And I'm comparing the three years that the mayor have actually did brick and mortar and have built things up, and we're still waiting to move and to design. Um, there's a lot of partnership and there's a lot of lack of engagement that have been done. And it's not to point fingers or to find fault, but it's a way that Housing Authority has to use this one particular piece of lands in an area that is very high in profile and holds a lot of weight and money. I know our land is good leverage, that I do understand. And I know we're on Facebook and I know there are a lot of developers watching us and listening to us, but one thing they need to understand, you're not dealing with dummies. That's one thing they need to understand. But if they're going to come in, we're going to do it correctly, respectfully, and it's not no kickback, it's not rubbing nobody's hand, it's doing a job with integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Council. Uh, Commissioner Forster. Any further questions, Commissioner Forster?
Hey, guys. I'm sorry. Of course, I have a bite of apple in my mouth.
I can come back to you if that's okay. Um, Commissioner Von Gossary?
Um, this question is to Jose. You, I've constantly heard you say, um, Greenleaf Resident Advisory Board. Who are they? Is this board, is this board, is Deana Walker, is Rhonda Hampton? Those President Council, let me speak, Jose. These are Resident Council Presidents. Now, when we're talking about Greenleaf, we're talking about, to my knowledge, because maybe I don't know what I'm talking about, but 203, then you have Greenleaf family, y'all five things is you have a resident council. 203, the resident council president is now, um, transformed, who signed off on everything, and it's an incomplete board, resident council board that is not in compliance. Okay, so now I have a problem as the family commissioner, who's the enemy to all of my constituents, because that's what I'm known to. I'm the enemy commissioner. However, looking out for your interests as your enemy, first and foremost, uh, boards, resident council boards have to be in compliance. So when you tell me that there's a Greenleaf Advisory Board, Ricky don't live in, um, none of Greenleaf, uh, communities. So what I like to hear from, I like to hear from Deana, I like to hear from, um, who is left for Miss Lefrich, um, Resident Council Board. Rhonda Hampton have already put her position in. Who are attending these meetings? Now, that's one. Number two, let's start with this bill first and setting them up. Now, I, now, we just had this meeting about Latin Square. Understand this clearly, the District of Columbia Housing Authority and no other housing authority in the United States of America is going to build 433 public housing units in a square and lot. Build first does not mean the same bill first that these residents are thinking, and this is why they are confused today, because if I live in Potomac Gardens, I'm thinking that it's going to be 400 buildings, it's going to be just like Potomac Gardens, and it's going to be 100% public housing. They are not understanding that bill first may mean, uh, you still in Ward Six, and we got 13 units over there and we adding them up like the electoral votes. That needs to be clear to residents so they can understand. The first right to return, now, we need to be honest about that, too. What do that entail? Because, hey, Jordan tells everybody who's on my lease right now, because I may not want to return, but when I left Greenleaf, I left with the whole family. And that family, I want to stay here, but my daughter want to return, and she's old enough now to be here in the household. These are the things that need to be tweeted out. Now, Charles Allen said that there would be bill first. Did Charles Allen tell you where you're going to be first at? And how, how, how many units you're going to build first? See, there's too many. I see how the, the package is being packaged, which is great, but we're still moving the same way we have been moving in the past. We making the same mistake as we made in Berry Farms with being deceived by saying, and we have to know that, we have to be honest. Now, if we don't have a resident council, then it needs to be residents who wants to volunteer, take classes, because you got us sitting at your table talking to developers, making deals, and we don't even know what we talking about. What we do know is we like our communities, and what we are visioning is by any means necessary, staying in that single-member district or close to those areas. Southwest is different from, um, Park Morton. First of all, Southwest have always been in a economical, always had parks and recreation, waterfront all around them. And I know my ward very well, because I've been going to meetings down Southwest at ECL, this ECL for 40 years. Now, what do you know that I don't? Because I'm not saying that the work can't get done, but we have to make sure that we inclusively include. You have empowerment, you have empowerment DC resident who have not been to this board and testified, but I bet you Linda had been at many of these meetings. Now, that's a resident, that's a resident who's educated and informed, but we agree with what, what her role, you know, her vision is, but she, she does have a clear path. I don't think...
Your five minutes is up.
Okay, what, my five minutes is up.
Yes. Uh, Jose, do you want to just answer, uh, respond quickly?
Sure. Um, so just, just make, let me clarify. But when I say Greenleaf Advisory Group, I don't mean the Resident Council Leadership Commissioner. Ms. Walker, Ms. Belk, those were separate conversations that we were having with them directly, uh, especially in preparation for the resident meetings. The advisory group, uh, which was in the presentation, that, that meeting, that, that group was conceived of as part of the master planning process back in 2015, 2016. It includes representatives from the ANC, ANC 6D, it includes representatives from the faith-based communities, lots of community-based. The group was largely also involved along with residents with creating the concepts that were incorporated for the RFP. Um, that is not the Resident Council Leadership.
This is the book you're talking about, because this is the book I'm looking at, too.
Correct. And, and all your questions about build first and, and 493 units, all of that, as evident, as shared earlier, it's going to be over the, the entire scope of , and not just in one location. It's also going to be part and parcel of what's discussed during the negotiation period around that phasing, what that looks like. Um, so, some of the questions that you had within that.
Yes, you did. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patricia. Uh, let's move to Commissioner Forster.
Thank you.
Did I give you enough time?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just two questions. Um, one, um, so I understand the purpose of this is so you all can begin conversations or continue conversations with the developer, and then you'll bring this back to the board for final approval, or bring it back to the Resident Council for the final approval. And for me, you know, because I'm not a, a resident of public housing, it's important that I know that the people are directly impacted by this support, the plan, and I haven't heard that yet, especially knowing that, um, the Resident Council Leadership hasn't approved it. Um, I said in the chat, you know, as ANC, it, it was always easier to approve something when you know that the neighbors or the people directly were impacted, um, you know, were part of the process and approve it. So that's, that's for, that, for me, that's what I'm looking for, is to make sure that the people that are directly impacted by this development, um, approve, approve this. So that's one. Um, and then this, that's the first is approval of the, the residents. And then also, um, is the purpose of our action today is to give you all, um, to give you what? Just you are, you are in conversations with them. So can you just help me understand exactly what you're asking us to do, what authority you're asking us to give you all?
So I can answer both your questions in, 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 in one response. What, what you're, what you're, what we're asking for today is the opportunity to, um, identify and select the developer, in essence. And in selecting that developer, we will be able to negotiate, um, the terms based on what the residents want to see in terms of future development. So we're trying to put the cart before the horse just a little bit, because right now, um, Commissioner Forster, we're trying to have the opportunity to select the development team that we would work with to do all the things you just pointed out, um, in conjunction with the resident leadership. Um, and we did have, you know, from our panel, we did have resident leadership on the panel, um, participating along with other, other, other individuals. So what we came up with and what we decided based on the panel recommendation was that this group would be the, the, the team to select, to continue the process and continue moving forward. That's all we're talking about right now. Um, the things that you, that you want to see with resident input and resident involvement, we have to select the team first in order for that to happen.
That's...
I was clarifying. So once you, so once with this motion, it will allow you all to select this developer, and then that puts us into a contract relationship with the developer. So if the developer decides that they don't want to hold to the black and white that, um, Patricia was asking for, we're stuck with the developer?
No, no. No. Go ahead, Central.
Sorry, Commissioner Forster, I can clarify. So we have not negotiated with this developer yet. We, we're seeking the authority through this resolution in order to enter into negotiations with this developer. But part and parcel and, you know, critical piece of this is then being able to bring that developer to the community and work with the community on, uh, ensuring that their priorities are incorporated into what we are negotiating, and that would be the key term sheet, you know, the, that's, and that's what the, our operating agreement is, we covered the 180 days. And it is important because as Commissioner Slover had indicated earlier, he had referenced other resolutions, but you know, as part of our approval process, we need to bring back to the board any financing agreements, and then most critically, any submissions to HUD, uh, which include the Section 18 demo dispo application, which would, you know, memorialize, um, the, you know, this process, you know, with HUD before, and without that, and without board approval on those pieces, we would not be able to move forward on any piece of the deal. This is simply to enter, allow us to enter into negotiations with a partner.
And those pieces require, just on its formality, require board, I mean, require resident input, right? For just to submit a demolition application, we have to have resident input, but we've taken it a step further by saying we've committed, um, to having monthly meetings with our residents to discuss this, quarterly meetings with other stakeholders. So I think, um, what, again, what we're asking for, as Central pointed out, and as Jose has talked about and Andre has, has discussed, is that this is just the, the opportunity to select it, really to select a developer and bring them to the table so the residents, um, and the Housing Authority Administration can start engaging in what we would like the project to look like.
One other, one quick question, as I looked at the development, actually, they, um, developed a building right by my house on Minnesota Avenue, which is, looks really good from the outside. Um, but it, you utilize resources from the Housing Production Trust Fund and, um, the Housing Choice Vouchers. So do we know, um, the financing that they'll be, like the two developments, the history of their development in DC, um, utilize those funding streams? Do we know, um, if, especially in this economy, would they be looking for the same type of support?
Central, do you want, you've been commenting on the financial, so I...
Yeah, I, I, again, it, it, it's premature to speak about, uh, individual financings because we have yet to actually fully engage with the development team in order to, uh, customize their plan and what will actually be built and, you know, incorporate the resident, uh, input. Um, but, I mean, they've done, you know, the, these developers have done projects all across the region and across the country utilizing, you know, a variety of sources. And then, uh, it would be contingent upon us to bring to you, the board, uh, approval, uh, once we have a financing package that you would be able to see and, and then.
And Central, can you just point out for Commissioner Forster that, um, resident input would actually impact, um, the various phases, number of units, number of, um, bedroom sizes, different things like that will also affect the capital stack, um, and how we put the financials together.
Very much so.
We still need resident, we have to get the resident input, um, before we can, you know, establish some of those parameters also.
Got it. So this doesn't lock us into any deal with the developer, just gives you opportunity to start conversations with them, and then it'll be brought back to us for final approval.
That's correct.
Yeah, we have to bring, there, there are several things we have to bring back to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Forster. Uh, let's move to Commissioner Tyler Farrow. Commissioner Tyler Farrow, do you have any questions at this time? Okay, we'll get back to Commissioner Tyler Farrow. Commissioner Ortiz?
Uh, this is me, um, Commissioner, um, Albert.
Yes, sir. Do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Yeah, I've got a couple of questions with Mr. Garrett and some of the, um, why don't, when, when he have the discussions with the residents? Why do we, why do he have the commissioners online too? That's a question. Because we like to hear their input, the final input.
Mr. Garrett, can you respond?
No, you're, 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 you're welcome to participate, but we also have recordings of it, so anything that you. So anything that you might have missed, Commissioner Tyler Farrow, you can view online, um, based on the link I sent out to everyone. It's on our, um, D C H A, um, dot U S, um, page. So you can actually see the meeting itself and hear all the questions that were posed to us by the residents.
I think he's asking a different question, he's asking why are commissioners invited to, to participate in those meetings rather than?
We can invite, we can invite, um, commissioners to participate, it's not a problem. If that's something that you would like to, to know, we can send out the schedule to you also.
That would be appreciated.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner Tyler Farrow?
Yes.
Well, I have none.
Great, uh, Commissioner Ortiz, go. And a reminder, if you're not, uh, speaking, please mute your device as we're getting feedback. Commissioner Ortiz?
None, everything's been answered as I've been listening, thanks.
Great, uh, Commissioner Slover.
Uh, I appreciate the opportunity, um, I don't have any questions, I'm gonna just read, um, something in to the record, to get it into the record. In January of twenty nineteen, the D C H A Board passed Resolution nineteen oh one. For me, it was a signal of the start of a better and healthier relationship between the board and the office of the executive director. The response to what the board had been requesting for years. The original, the resolution described in great detail a framework on how the Office of the Executive Director would engage the board as we embarked on the enormous task of repositioning our aging housing stock. Not one, but two exhibits listed the information to be provided, the expectations of the board and the approvals required by the board during this process. The overriding spirit and tone being that it was a concrete attempt to reverse the dynamic of the way the board had been engaged in the past and to create a healthier working relationship with the board by bringing them into the process earlier and at more appropriate times where, where concerns could be raised and addressed in a more productive way. Unfortunately, the agency has not lived up to its end of the bargain. Two months ago, this board voted down two resolutions seeking authority to submit applications to convert public housing properties onto the RAD platform. These resolutions were voted down in large part because information required by Resolution nineteen oh one had not been provided. Last month, this very same resolution before us was voted down in large part because the information required again by Resolution nineteen oh one was not provided. Without the critical information, the majority of the board said the executive, to the executive, that it could not approve these three resolutions at that time. So here we find ourselves today presented with the same resolution, still devoid of any information related to or mentioning to the replacement of our four hundred ninety-three units. No references to ensuring the right to return to our residents. No assurances that we will ever have the opportunity to prove the critical final terms and conditions of this deal. In essence, like Resolution before on Park Morton and Berry Farm, the agency is asking us to pre-approve whatever deal that can cut with the developer to cede its responsibility to approve critical elements that will impact the future for the residents of Greenleaf. That is not something I'm willing to do. Resolution nineteen oh one calls for, among other things, a deal summary that provides standard background information for commissioners to consider in connection with each proposed redevelopment or major rehabilitation. In this case, the document would include terms and conditions presented by the partner in the best and final, our intended contributions to the deal at this point, and a high-level schedule that would, of the various phases and highlighting when our units would be replaced. Not even this most basic document has been provided to us. A document that would allow us to confirm what the agency is assuring us. The reason all this information is critical for the board to understand upfront is that our track record is one that indicates that we need to do, change the way we do business. We can't have another Berry Farm, we can't have another Park Morton. Where after years of trying and the displacement of our clients, the path forward is still not clear. And actually less clear than it was when we started fourteen plus years ago. We need to know now, upfront, the number one priority in this deal is the replacement of the four hundred ninety-three public housing units. And a plan to maintain those units while they're being replaced. This is something that has not been handled well in past projects. We need to know that our prospective partners are clear-eyed, that these four hundred ninety-three units are also top priority to them. Otherwise, chances are we picked the wrong partner. Past deals have shown us that the delivery of our units gets pushed into later phases again and again. And in some instances, they're never even built. Additionally, needs of our partners often delay projects that in turn delay the delivery of our units. All too often, we cede control of our properties to others and in turn cede the ability to deliver on promises we made to our clients. Again, we need to reverse that trend and maintain enough control of this project to be able to make sure our replacement units are online as soon as possible and not on someone else's timeline. Again, this board was invited to participate in the portfolio redevelopment process in a way that had been denied previously. The idea was to provide information needed to the board to feel comfortable supporting projects early in the process. This makes sense for everyone as it empowers the board to fulfill its fiduciary obligation, provides the agency with much-needed support of the board, and provides the, the, uh, agency with increased leverage as it negotiates the best possible deal with our partners. By not embracing this process, we are destined to repeat the mistakes of the past. Mistakes that have led to hundreds, if not thousands of families being displaced from their homes for years, going on decades. We need to learn from the past and not repeat these mistakes again. At the last meeting, it was suggested this board needs to just trust the judgment of the professionals to do their job. To that, I would say that you need to trust us enough to give us the information we need to do our jobs. Bottom line is that one month after voting this down, the board is being asked to approve the same document without any additional information. I just don't see how in good faith we can do that. Once again, I can't support this because to do so would be surrender the board's obligation to provide its input to ensure the best result for the Greenleaf tenants and to avoid mistakes of the past. I hope my fellow commissioners will support me again in asking to be provided the information we've requested so that we can approve this resolution and do so with confidence that it is in the best interest of the residents Greenleaf, something we all want, allowing us to be ready to support the agency in the hard work ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Slover, uh, Commissioner Strickland.
Thank you, uh, for giving the opportunity. Um, like, uh, everyone else, I, I think that this is a great idea and I like to commend the, the team for going forward. Um, it's a perfect note, but I do think that it's in the spirit of, of nineteen oh one by coming to us first. And then we see the deal, the, the terms of the deal once it's been negotiated. So I do appreciate that. But one thing that I would like to make a comment on, and this is the representative from Wynn pointed out, is just ensuring that the residents get an opportunity a, at the beginning of the decision-making, once the negotiations start. I don't know how that looks and how you incorporate that, but I think that is something that's very important that we have to do before we see the, the, the deal, the, the draft deal sheet, uh, when it is presented to this board. Uh, but, uh, Director, I would like you just to state for the record one more time, uh, that at the end of, at, once you negotiate and once there's a draft deal together, that it will come back to the board, uh, to be discussed, whether it be in the dev mod meeting or in the board as a whole, uh, just to alleviate some of those concerns from other, from our other, uh, commissioners.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Strickland, and that's actually commissioners, when, remember, we're just asking the opportunity to select a developer and negotiate with a team, right? Nineteen oh one really kicks in after we've done that. And what Commissioner Strickland has just talked about, when we bring it back to you to discuss, these are the terms, this is what we're looking at. That's when you'll see, um, the things that were, were, are referenced really in nineteen oh one, that's when it really kicks in.
Yeah, if I can build upon that, Director Garrett, um, I'd also like to say, you know, like, uh, you know, nineteen oh one is triggered as, as well in that, uh, you know, with, with our section eighteen demo, prior to submitting any section eighteen demo dispo, any financing package. But it's, it's critical that we first have the opportunity to engage in the conversation with the developer on a one-on-one basis, which we have not done to date. Everything has been done through a procurement process in which where we've been whittling down based on priorities that, of the authority, the board and the residents that have been baked into, um, that solicitation process. And, uh, to answer, I think I saw Commissioner Council had a question on the, in the chat, like what happens if the negotiations fall through? If the negotiations fall through and we are not able to execute it, you know, to, sorry, to, um, you know, memorialize a deal to bring to this board, that, that, that partner gets kicked out. And then we have the opportunity then to bring another team, to negotiate with another team. So we are not, uh, beholden to the team that we are bringing forth today in perpetuity. So I want to dispel and dispel that notion. Thank you.
One other, one other thing, and I, I know it may have been talked about in brown bag, but let's be real, we're talking about the southwest, uh, of D C. And if the Housing Authority is not leading the way on projects down there, folks that look like many of us on this line probably not have an opportunity to live on the southwest waterfront in that area. So like I said, I commend us moving, uh, cautiously ahead. Um, and the longer we wait, uh, we, I, I don't see that, that there's a reason to, to prolong this. This project's been around for a long time. And if we can't move forward, what is that telling to the residents that live down there now? Uh, should they have to wait, uh, to get, uh, uh, better living conditions, should they have to wait any longer? So, uh, I commend the team for moving forward. Like I said, it's not perfect, but we will be involved every step of the way. And we encourage that the, the residents stay involved and that the director finds a creative way to make sure residents are involved during the negotiations with the developer, um, so that their, their voices are heard as well.
Thank you, Levine, uh, Commissioner Fauchek, you? You're on mute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so I just wanted to, you know, we've had a, this resolution before us before. So I just wanted to ask the executive director, what's changed? I know you guys did a great job of laying out kind of the impeachment, uh, that has changed or that has been, uh, occurred, I guess, since our last meeting. But what has changed in the resolution?
Nothing has changed in the resolution, I think we, the, great, we added the one hundred and eighty day component, but that was a modification we made last time, so.
Right, we took out, right, we took out that, that language because that was, uh, oversight. So we, we, we took out the, to make this a hundred and eighty, eighty days dead drop.
Okay, um, and there were other issues that I think were raised by commissioners, uh, in the last meeting, uh, before the last vote. Um, how we sort of address those different issues, um, in order to accommodate, uh, the, you know, direction and the guidance from the commissioners.
I, I only, the one that was a strong, was the strong, um, piece was the resident engagement, um, Commissioner Fauchek, you know, that was the, the piece that we concentrated and centered ourselves on. Um, uh, some of the other issues which came up, which was, you know, a financing plan or something like that, as we've noted today, um, that comes in another stage, another step that we will be bringing, bringing back to, um, to the board. So it's nothing that we could actually do about that in, at this stage. It would be at a later stage that we would be, um, discussing the financing component. And that would be, you know, after we had the opportunity to negotiate and talk about, um, some of the parameters that the residents want to see, um, in the process.
And then can you also tell us, so, oh, I'm sorry, did somebody else?
No, you have the floor.
Okay, uh, can you tell us then, if we don't, uh, vote on this today or don't approve it today, what would happen next?
Um, we wouldn't be able to move forward and the quality of life for the residents will remain the same. You know, we don't, we don't have the capital stack to make the, we don't have the capital stack to make the major improvements at the, at the property. Um, so our goals would be, you know, this is, this is our, you know, our, our intent to improve the quality of life there. Um, that's the, that's the, the gist of it, unfortunately.
And if we came back and you came back to us with another resolution with another team, would it have any financial data that's, uh, not in this resolution, would it be in another team's resolution?
No, no, it would be the same exact, same exact, um, position that we're in now. Asking to select a developer will be what we would be talking about if it was developer team two, three or four. Um, that's what we will be bringing to you again.
Okay, so just to make sure we're on the same page, so we're voting to give you the authorization to exclusively negotiate with this team. And if you were to come back to us with another resolution that included another team, it would be the same resolution, uh, that you'd bring us, uh, at that time?
Yeah, we will be in the same position, yes, sir.
So really, at this point, we're just, if by not approving this today, or if we didn't approve it today, we're just stretching out the time?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
This is just for, this is really just for developer selection, that's it.
Okay, so there's nothing else?
The right to negotiate with the developers, it's not even an approval of any plans or deals.
Um, and, and the other, other thing I want to say, because some of the things that, that people might be asking or have the expectation of, I can't have that conversation with the development, with the development team about, um, because you haven't given me approval to engage them in that manner.
Right, so now we're giving you the approval to go out and figure out what the financial approach would be, what the phasing approach would be and really how they would build first. But they wouldn't be able to move any residents, break ground.
No, no.
Until another board vote, is that correct?
Right, remember, we couldn't, we couldn't start relocating residents until we had a HUD approval for a demolition disposition application.
So, yes, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that, before anything like that could happen, there would be multiple board actions to take place.
Well, and that would be helpful, can you walk through kind of what the, how many more board votes we're looking at, just as a general? Doesn't have to be precise, but just as a general, how many more board actions there would be on this?
Sure, uh, as Director Garrett had indicated, uh, it would also, it would include the submission to HUD for the section eighteen demo dispo, uh, as well as, uh, and then this would come through the course of negotiation prior to any disposition or financings of any individual phases. Uh, they would, uh, would need to come to the board for approval. So it could be, you know, the, through the course of, um, uh, the Green, the Greenleaf redevelopment, it could be multiple, like, multiple actions that would need to take place and approvals at the board level.
Right, okay, and so at this point, I heard some of the public witnesses say that they want to see us at least start the conversation while we continue the engagement with the community. Is, that, I get that sentiment, right?
That, that's correct, I mean, and as, uh, I believe Jose walked through earlier, we already have a, uh, a resident meeting scheduled and we, you know, made, made the pledge to meet with the residents on a monthly basis. And then the broader community, um, external to the residents that includes other than just, just residents on a quarterly basis, you know, putting the priority on the residents first. And, uh, it, it would be our objective that if the board gives us the authority to enter into negotiations, that we would bring the team with us to these meetings in order to engage directly alongside us so that, uh, they can hear firsthand what the priorities are and that they're able to incorporate that into our plan.
Okay, and I'm probably running short on time, but just to be clear, so you would be, what we're doing, approving today is actually you being able to take the team with you to this community engagement in order for the team to hear directly from the residents what they want to see.
That's correct.
Today, because you can't get to an agreement with the team without coming back to us. Is that right?
That's absolutely correct, sir.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on what we were voting on, uh, before, uh, the vote gets called. Chairman, thank you for the time.
You're quite welcome. Let me close out by, uh, making a few comments. Um, and so first of all, I appreciate all of the questions and comments that my colleagues have made. Uh, and it really, uh, just demonstrate the level of attention uh, that you have paid to this, uh, issue, this particular resolution. Uh, but to, to give a little context for, for folks who may be following along at home, um, this wasn't indeed a resolution that.
um, this wasn't indeed a resolution that was uh, discussed uh, at the last meeting. Um, and subsequent to that meeting, uh, Executive Director Garrett and his team held a meeting uh, with, of the development committee of this, of this board. Many of the folks uh, on this call participated in it. And it was an opportunity uh, to um, for commissioners to ask additional questions uh, that they may have, may have had rather, uh, seek clarification and get further information on uh, the proposed resolution uh, before. Some commissioners uh, were available and attended, others were not available and did not attend. And so I just want to put on the record that the executive director and his team uh, made efforts uh, to continue to engage the board on this since the last meeting. It's also important to know that one of the major uh, pieces of feedback that we heard uh, this, the last time around was the uh, the, the, the lack of engagement or the, or the paltry nature of engagement uh, with the community. And so I said at, at the forum last month that I would not support, I cannot support a resolution, this resolution unless there was uh, intense engagement uh, be, between uh, intense engagement period. That has happened. In fact, I have participated in, in that engagement. I, not that I don't trust the executive director and his team, but I have my own forum uh, to get input uh, from the southwest community as to the uh, as to this project. And what I can tell you, I heard is that people want a couple of things. One, they'd like this, the executive director and his team to have the opportunity to engage with the proposed development team. But he also won that um, engagement to include the community. And so what does that mean? Getting the development team uh, in front of the community often. Uh, so that the community can share firsthand uh, their feedback on how this redevelopment uh, should occur. It also meant that the community, also heard from the community that the executive director and the team at DCHA have to do two things at the same time. So they have to work on the redevelopment and they have to work on, up, the upkeep and the maintenance of the facilities. And I heard, I, I, I heard that in meetings I've had, I also heard it from emails that I've received uh, on this subject. I don't think anyone says, is saying, don't do this development. What people are saying is move ahead, but don't drop the ball on our basic needs. And our basic needs mean keeping the existing buildings and facilities clean, safe and habitable. And so, Mr. Garrett, I know this is not the subject of the resolution, but uh, someone in their comments earlier and in the chat uh, mentioned the uh, the conditions uh, within the, uh, within some of these buildings. What can you say to the community uh, now to just assure them that you wouldn't just focus on the redevelopment to the detriment of, of, of day, of daily safety and maintenance?
So commissioners and to, to the public, there, there's been a complete overhaul of this, of a, this agency, especially in the property management department. So, um, we're going to continue to um, rev up our opportunities for um, maintenance in the buildings. Um, you know, COVID did set us back on some work orders, but we've, we're catching up now um, as, as appropriate. And we should be caught up before the end of the, end of the month. Um, along with that, it, it, one example of PMO changing was instead of relying on a third party to do our rodent abate, abatement, uh, we engaged and created our own rodent abatement department, right, our own pest control unit uh, that goes out to particular properties and um, and looks at them and makes sure everything is done appropriately. And in fact, we just did a check, um, we were just at Greenleaf last week. Um, uh, the abatement team, rodent abatement team is there, um, just checking in um, to make sure there weren't any issues at Greenleaf with rodents. So if there's um, a particular issue with, with a resident directly, um, we'll engage them. That, we're engaging them in a one-on-one method um, to deal with any work orders or any problems that they may have personally in their particular unit. But overall, the building is being maintained um, to the, to, to a great standard, a, along with the rest of the portfolio. Um, again, I've been going out with Commissioner Talaferro, Commissioner Council, um, even yourself Neil, to, to visit some of the buildings, some of the senior buildings and some of the properties, um, to see exactly what we're doing. And um, from your own vantage point, I, I think you see that, um, we are working as hard as we possibly can to maintain the buildings as they are. Um, any major capital improvements that might be necessary to keep the building um, um, functioning, and we will do just that. Um, example, as I pointed out once uh, earlier, was an elevator at Greenleaf would be replaced. Um, even, you know, we're moving towards redevelopment, hopefully a redevelopment opportunity. Um, we know that we need to replace the elevator because there's still residents living there. Um, so where we need to make capital improvements um, or repairs, we'll definitely do that. Um, and we're going to continue to rev up our maintenance uh, approach on a daily basis to um, provide the proper quality of life for residents. Not only at Greenleaf, but across.
So you answered, yes, that you'll do both?
Yes, that was a long way of, of saying yes, I apologize. But I just, I get, I get passionate about it because um, I, I'm trying in my mind to figure out, you know, ways that everyone can see that this isn't the same old housing authority um, from fourteen years ago.
So a couple, two, two, two other um, uh, questions or, or comments, and then we'll call a, a vote. You know, uh, it was mentioned earlier on that we, and I, I don't, I'm not sure that I disagree uh, with the statement that we often allow the developers uh, to uh, control. Uh, those are not the exact words, but how could you assure us that DCHA is in the driver's seat this time? That we will get bill first, that we will get one-to-one replacement? And I know it still has to be negotiated, that our units wouldn't be uh, the last set of units to be considered. How do we change, how could you assure us that there will be a, a shift uh, in mentality within DCHA that will put our DC, our, our public housing residents first?
Uh, we wouldn't bring anything back to you um, that didn't state that. That, that's the bottom line. Anything that we bring back to you is going to have those parameters um, in place. Or we'll have, or if there is a shift, those will be parameters that have been shifted and agreed upon um, with resident input.
Great, and then finally, and I know some other commissioners have a second round of questions, so we'll open it up to that, to them if they, if they do. Uh, and then for the board, obviously, you know, you're going to be uh, negotiating uh, with the development team. Um, and John sort of teed us up earlier. Um, can we get a schedule, we don't have to do it today, as to, you know, how often and what information uh, you will be sharing with this board over the next uh, six months? Uh, so that, you know, we're not meeting six months from now and you asked, and asked to approve uh, demo dispo resolution or some financing structure. So I'm going to ask that uh, Central and his team um, provide this board uh, with a schedule of engagements and updates uh, moving forward.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Council?
For record, can you give the definition of what we mean in terms of one-for-one?
You're, you're talking about one-for-one replacements?
Yes.
Yeah, number of units.
Will it be on the same property or some can come back and some will be placed somewhere else, but in the same area?
In the same area. Remember, we're talking about build-first opportunities that might not be necessarily right on the Greenleaf footprint. It may be a block away, so, but that.
That's what I want, that's what I need to hear for record of the constituents to understand what one-for-one means.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Council. Uh, Commissioner Slover?
I appreciate it. I wanted to, to go back to this notion of um, of what and when we will be brought back for approval. I think Commissioner Fauci and others have sort of tried to hone in on when the board would have an opportunity to way bit, way back, weigh in on these things again. And, and the, the agency keeps saying, we're going to be involved in the process the entire time. Words are important. I mean, what does that mean? Because last month, I asked very specifically, you know, if deal elements will be brought back to the board specifically, you know, about the replacement units. When the phasing would be, would they be first, would they be last? What would be the size of the units? What would be the land value assigned to our land? What would be the, the ownership participation in these deals? And the response that I got was, I'm reading it from the minutes from last month. We will bring these deals, as I mentioned, the trigger is being the timing of financing or a disposition. But at that point, and this is what happened with Park Morton, and this is what happened with Berry Farm, is that at that point, all the things I just talked about have been agreed to. And we are now in the position of having to execute on it. And so there's really no opportunity to say, hey, I, I don't like that, because it's all been agreed to. So what I'm suggesting is that maybe we're too early in the process. I don't understand what you're looking for if I'm an approval. I think someone asked earlier, do you really need the approval of the board to go negotiate this deal? What I think, what I think you need personally, and I've had this debate for years, is that once you agree to the terms, I feel like that's when you need to come back to the board and say, hey, this is what we've agreed to. They're going to put in this, we're going to put in that, and this is what we're going to build together. What do you think? But that time for us to come back again is well after you've agreed to all those things. At that point, you're saying to us, well, we got to put the money together, but this is what we've all agreed to do. Or we need to, we need to do a land disposition and this is what we're going to do. We haven't had the opportunity to weigh in on that in, in, in terms of a vote. And that's what it comes down to. So that's where I get concerned, and that's where I think the board loses its, loses its opportunity to weigh in on these deals. So can, can you explain to me whether I'm missing that or that's, that's accurate?
So Commissioner, hold on, I'm going to turn on my camera as well. So Commissioner is the central, uh, CP. Uh, you, you are absolutely correct in that we are very, very early in this process. We have not negotiated on an individual basis with this team. So to present that information to you right now is devoid of DCHA's direct input and able to, and the residents' input in being able to shape the actual program that we would present to the board for approval. Um, it, you know, the, the, through this entire solicitation process, we captured and uh, put forward the objectives and the priorities of the residents and the board and DCHA, whether, you know, the one-for-one replacement, the uh, the, you know, the, the build first. So, and as the director said, we would not be bringing these deals if they did not meet those objectives. And at that, at that appropriate time, we would be presenting all of those pieces that you mentioned, the financing, um, how it meets that broader objective and what the overall timeframe is. Like when we bring to you that first deal, how does this fit within the rest of the project? You know, and, and, and what are the protections that we're putting in place to ensure that if the developer does not move forward, that we will be able to, to, to step back? So that, that's the best way I can answer the question at this time.
And Commissioner Slover, just, may I, may I just say one, one, one piece before you ask your next question?
Go ahead.
I, I just want to say Commissioner Slover, this is, you know, customary for um, the administration to be, to, to be allowed to select a developer. That's the, that's what we keep going back to as part of the process itself. Uh, without that, um, I don't have the ability to negotiate with anyone. It's, and that is customary across the board um, at any housing authority that I've ever worked for or, or, or did a redevelopment deal on behalf of. First, I must select the developer. And then we move to the phase that Central was just discussing and talking about.
I, I, I appreciate that, but what I'm trying to get to is the devil in the detail, the devil in the details are things that are critical and important. In terms of, this is the, the most important thing is, is the schedule and delivery of these four hundred and ninety-three units. I want to know that, I want to be able to have the opportunity to weigh in on that before you come to us and say, we got it all finalized, we just need you to approve the financing.
So, uh, Commissioner Slover, as part.
What if?
Apologize.
What if, what if we don't, what, why would, why would we not be able to weigh in on that in a meaningful way before that? And, and I want to point to something, the reason this is concerning and the reason there's, that I feel like we're all having this conversation is because in July of two thousand thirteen, this board approved a very similar resolution of this for Berry Farm. And nothing has come back to the board in terms of like demo dis- I mean, we're, we're still, it's still up in the air. We still don't know the phasing over there. We still don't know the financing capital stack over there. I asked the other day and it's still being negotiated. And so the concern that I have is, we set these things out into the world and do not provide ourselves an opportunity to put ourselves back into the deal and to put ourselves back into our governance role. And so that concerns me, and I understand that this is a new administration, I understand all of that. But we got to learn from the past. We need to be able to put ourselves back into this process so that we can make sure it's trust and verify, trust and verify. And, and I don't feel like we're being able to verify. We're being asked to trust, we're not being given the opportunity to verify. Do I want this deal not to go? Of course I want this deal to go, but it's got to be set up right up front. If we don't know what we're going, in other words, you did a whole process, it was a best and final. You've had some back and forth with this developer, yet we have no idea where you guys landed. You won't even tell us that. You won't tell us what they, what the great thing that they offered to you, as the resolution says, they provided a great economic incentive to the agency. I have no idea what that is. And because you're not willing to share that with us, I get, I get concerned.
So Commissioner, if I, if I can attempt to respond um, through our process and through um, the RFP process and through our presentations to the board, the multiple presentations, we did show like a, you know, the, the proposed site plan, which did not, you know, include the input of DCHA staff and the residents afterwards, you know, you know, after it was submitted. Like we need the ability in order to engage with them to shape that appropriately to say that here are the build-first options that we are able to support and provide uh, the true build, you know, to uphold that build-first commitment. And then that would be phase zero, if you call it. And then here's where phase one would be anticipated, and we could be bringing those to you in that manner. But as, as part of our section eighteen demo dispo application, we also need to be able to provide what is our proposed relocation plan. And that, and, and I know Director Garrett has harped on it previously, and I, and I'll, I'll let him do it again. But as to like how critical that is, because HUD will not allow us to also move forward unless we have a plan as to how and where we're going to relocate folks. And I, in order, I, I, and I appreciate you drawing the comparison to Berry Farm, but where it is substantially different is, is that we have crafted this differently from day one in that we are um, you know, and, and then you have the approval as the board to stop any projects from moving forward that do not meet those objectives, like in terms of the build. If we don't bring a build-first deal to you, the board can prevent that from moving forward.
Well, I, yeah, I, I know I get accused of interrupting, but that part there is where it breaks down for me because you know, at that point, we're so far down the road that we really can't stop it. So what I'm trying to say is, you know, what I do if we're living is, I, I do work in the private sector, I've done work in the government. My point is, the deals that I've seen to be the most successful are the ones that are set up in the beginning, crystal clear. So clear-eyed, everybody knows what the expectations are. Everybody knows what the priority is. What I don't see, and what I don't know, and I hear you saying, but I don't, I don't know how to verify it. And I don't know that Penrose and whom, and the other people, I, I, their objectives to money, I get that. And our objective is to relate these public, they're not, those are not necessarily together. So how do I know and how do we know until it's fatal complete that our priorities are number one? Without us saying that in the beginning, without the developer fully understanding that's our expectation with the caveat that we could actually stop it. with the caveat that we could actually stop it if it isn't. And that's where it breaks down, because by the time it gets to us, it's too late to stop it.
Well, let me, let me enter, let me say Commissioner Slover, this, there's no fait accompli because it hasn't, hadn't started. All, all, all we asking in this resolution is, is begin talking to a developer that was selected by the panel pursuant to the procurement process. That's it. And so the, the, the control of the board is not relinquished. The board can stop it at any time. Through various means.
Name some of those, because the problem is, Mr. Mays, is as Mr. Sanquin said last month, the only time this comes back to us, according to his words, is when there's a financing or disposition. That point, months or years may have passed because-
Well, I, I, I can tell you-
At that point, all of those, all of the devils in the detail have been agreed. And so what opportunity along the way?
Right, that's not-
Is there available to us to stop it if we see something we don't like?
Yeah, Commissioner Slover, that's not correct. So there's multiple opportunities to stop it if the board disagrees with, with the path that the agency is taking. Number one is with the MOU. You know, we have 180 days, just we start the process of talking to the developer. We have 180 days to come to a MOU. This is a, then there's a process of the master development agreement. And then ultimately, the process of saying, the board can say, as far as the demo dispo, that the board doesn't like any of it. And, and makes a determination to, to scrap the entire thing. And so, you know, in, in between those processes, it's a total involvement, and as others have said, and the engagement of the community, the engagement of the board, it's, it's not, we get this resolution, the agency gets this resolution, and then runs away, it hides, that's, that's not the process at all. This is the very, very, very beginning of just speaking to a developer who was selected through the procurement process so that we have the 180 days, we can start that process, and then come back to the board at various stages so that we are fully engaged with not only the residents, but once again, the board of commissioners.
Mr. Mays, this particular, this particular, I'm sorry, Commissioner Slover, I'm sorry. I just wanted to point this out. Mr. Mays, this resolution doesn't give the executive director or the administration full authority to execute any and all documents moving forward, does it?
No.
Does not. That means a master developer agreement, I would have to get approval from the Board of Commissioners to finalize.
All of that, all of that, right, correct. All, all we doing at the very, very beginning, all we doing is trying to start the process. We haven't started the process. We're simply trying to start the process.
Okay, guys.
Yeah, let me finish this, because-
Can you wrap it up now?
Going unchecked, because historically, this board has never been brought an MOU. This board has never been brought a development services agreement. Because the position of this agency here today has been that those are not contracts. They do not compel a paying action. So therefore, those documents have historically never been brought back to this board. And I don't, I don't hear that having changed from the questions I asked last month. So I, I stand on the point that as it stands today, there is no guarantee that those documents will be brought back to us. So we don't have those touch points.
Well, Commissioner, the only thing I can say is don't judge us by someone else's, don't judge, you know, this, by, by prior, someone else's history.
Commissioner Slover, if I may.
I can't, I can't sign it, I, I'm sorry, Central, I just want to say again, commissioners, I can't execute a master developer agreement. And that is the binding document for a process like this. For a redevelopment opportunity for a housing authority is the master developer agreement. You haven't given me approval to do that. All this resolution does is give me the opportunity to speak and negotiate with a developer to try and move towards that particular process.
I have a finding from, from the, I have a finding from the previous attorney, a thousand, sorry, a memo that says you don't need our approval to sign a master developer agreement. Because it's not a contract.
All right, Commissioner Slover, we, we, do you want to ask a final question so we can move on to others?
I'm just saying it's a misrepresentation. The board, the agency has weighed in in the past, so you're saying that's not the case now. You're saying that not, that the agency doesn't, that they're not taking that position anymore.
I, I can't say. I'm not the legal counsel, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
What, what position, I'm sorry.
You're not, you're now no longer taking the position that a development services agreement does not require board approval.
I'm not, we, I, I don't know why attorney took that position. I have no idea in what context that position was made. So I have no idea what your, your point of reference is. But we, but we made it very clear that, we made it very clear, what we asking for right now is to talk to a developer that was selected by the procurement process. Then come back to the board regarding the MOU. Come back to the board regarding the master development agreement. Then come back to the board regarding the demo dispo. Then come back to the board regarding various aspects of the development. Then come back to the board regarding resident engagement. So there's multiple times that, that we'd be coming back to the board regarding this.
When you say coming back to the board, this is my final question, Neil, I, I apologize. I'm sure you're, you're, you know, rightfully upset with me. They coming back to the board, do you mean for a formal approval or just to say this is what we're doing?
I, I'm not upset, I'm not sure. We'll be coming to the back to the-
Are you going to ask for a for a master developer agreement? Or are you just going to come back and say we've finalized it?
Well, we'll bring the terms and conditions of the master development agreement.
For what?
And that, that's, that's, that is the engagement that we, that the executive director promised. To tell you the terms and conditions. And understand this, the part, the issue is ultimately, the board has the ultimate determination whether this deal goes through, whether development goes through or not.
Is it for approval or for review?
The aspects of the development.
Correct.
The aspect, I'm sorry, someone else talking.
Yeah, the actual, for development agreement will be brought back to the board for a review or for approval?
For both, a review and approval. For review and approval. We can't go forward unless the, the board agrees of various conditions.
I, I, you answered your question, you don't have to explain the answer to your question, that's called filibustering. So, and Bill, I was, I was just smirking, not upset. But you asked some very relevant questions. But so let me just ask a couple of questions just to, to close, and I promise we're not going to prolong this much longer. We, we, what, maybe a statement, so we meet almost every month. We, we meet every month in committee meetings, in what we call ground back meetings before the board, we call ad hoc meetings. Particularly on, that are critical, crucial, and important to the residents, our residents. This is a critical, crucial, and important issue, the redevelopment of Greenleaf. And we will make all the forums available to the public and to the board of commissioners to make sure that every question is answered before we provide approval. And as Tyrone and, and Central and Greg said, there are going to be other opportunities for board input, but also for board approval, particularly under critical elements, the demo dispo, the term sheet, and the financing agreement. So there will be other opportunities to weigh in. But I just want to thank the executive director and his team for getting us to where we are. This has been a long process, and I know you guys are tired. I think we're tired too. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Alicia, could we have roll call?
Sure, Commissioner Fautier. Could you repeat your response, sir?
Yes.
Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz-Gow?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Talaferro? Commissioner Talaferro, are you there? I'll circle back. Commissioner Council? Commissioner Council? I'm sorry, can you repeat your response?
Oh.
Thank you. Commissioner Forrester?
Making sure my mic is on. I want to vote. I could vote to pass this, but because the president of the Residents Association does not feel comfortable with this, I wish she had an opportunity to speak. So I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Gasterie?
I would have to vote against this because the majority of the residents at Greenleaf, I understand that they're not at sitting at the table with Rick Group and never have. And I support the president of Greenleaf who states that her residents are always disregarded and has been disregarded. So she have no idea of, of what's going on with Rick's group. And that impacts her personally because she is the president of Greenleaf family.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Circle back to Commissioner Talaferro?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My vote is, yeah, there you go.
I'm sorry, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Allen?
My vote is yes.
Thank you. You have a yes for no, the resolution is approved.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, thank you, Executive Director Garrett and team. Uh, we're now going to open for public comments. Uh, again, let me remind you, if you are resident, you have five minutes. If you're a non-resident, you have three minutes. Uh, let's start with Shanta Hi. Ms. Hi?
I think she's muted, can someone unmute her, please?
Ms. Hi, it's your turn.
Thank you, commissioners, for having me today. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to remind the board, okay, Keonda, I'm going to talk to you later, thank you. All right, bye-bye. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I want to remind the board of commissioners that many of my residents are still being moved rapidly from the property, and I just got off the phone with one of my residents, Ms. Keonda Campbell, who is in complete compliance with DCHA, but yet has not received her voucher, and she is in the construction zone. Um, and I just wanted to mention that. As I was saying, you all are rapidly removing my residents from the property while there is still a lack of communication with me as their representation about what is going on. Recently, you all asked for an extension of the LDA, the land disposition agreement, when you have stressed to me that it would not be feasible to do this. How is it feasible for you to do so? Explain to me in a written email. Give me an answer as to why this is okay for you to ask for five years to waste doing nothing as you've done in the past 6.5 years, almost seven, but not for me to have five years making home ownership through my original Part 1 equity plan that was presented to you last February in 2019. Tell me, some of my residents, former neighbors are calling me in distress wishing that they had never moved from Part 1. Tell me why it is heartbreaking for me to watch my neighbors of almost 20 years leave the property now. And I'll never be able to look out my window every morning and watch Ms. Hawthorne going to work, and she is 74 years beautiful. Do you understand what I'm saying? Tell me why there is only one original board member remaining from the late, great Ms. Marie A. Whitfield, resident council board, who happens to be the oldest senior on my property now and the only family that my grandchildren have on this property and in DC. And, excuse, but you sour sap suckers want to take my children's grandmother away from there? And COVID has already made it so that we can't see her every day as it is. And now all you want to do is just toss her wherever, away from her family. Help me to understand why you all want to destroy my community. Help me to understand why you don't want to help me and residents like me to get out of poverty and to better our lives, my life. Why must you uphold the systemic racism? I've done nothing but do everything that I possibly can to make my life better. Opportunities to change my life and the lives of my residents around me. And all you've done is keep us down, tear us apart, push us out, displace us with vouchers, and make empty promises, tell lies, and feed your need for greed. The Lord will smite your, your heathenish ways this day and the next, and every hindrance you cause upon the innocent. I speak this upon you this day and every day hereafter. And in closing, I'll leave you with scripture, as I always do, Amos 3:15. "I will strike the winter house along with the summer house, and the houses of Irish shall perish, and the great houses shall come to an end," declares the Lord, New Ronan Ray 13:15. "You shall surely put the inhabitants of this, of that city, excuse me, that city to the sword, devoted it to destruction, all who are in it, and its cattle with the edge of sword." Jeremiah 21:6. "And I will strike down the inhabitants of this city, both man and beast; they shall die of great pestilence." The Lord has spoken, amen. I'm Ms. Shanta Hi, President of the Council at Park Morton. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hi. Paula Matthews? Give me a, Paula, I know she's joining my phone. Ms. Matthews?
Ms. Matthews, you can press star six on your phone. To unmute. Ms. Matthews is going to press star six.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's, let's come back to Ms. Matthews. Gabrielle Davis? Ms. Davis? Have they identified Ms. Davis? Have they, you have to take yourself off to need to speak.
Hello?
Yeah, who's this?
This is Paula Matthews, can y'all hear me?
Yes, Ms. Matthews, go ahead, you can proceed.
Go right ahead. Paula, we can hear you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm sitting here, I'm listening to all of y'all, and it's a ball of confusion. I actually wanted to talk about okay, I'm trying to check though. My, my issue with my sense, there has not been a, a response. But in listening to y'all, I want to start out by saying that we seem to act like all of this is brand new. We keep talking about, um, uh, Greenleaf and all of this and all of that, but there was a off the capers, and before off the capers, there was something else too. And, and then it was very pomp, and I'm hearing an echo, and I don't know why.
Ms. Matthews, we can hear you loud and clear.
And, and so with all of that being said, throughout time, there has been many mistakes made. Okay, thank you. uh, okay, thank you. On y'all watch and before y'all watch. And now it's time to do something a little bit different because, uh, we talk about the bill first. I hear y'all, I hear y'all talk about that. We've, we've been talking about that before. We talk about the one for one replacement that don't never really happen. Um, I hear Mr. Garrett sitting up here giving this, this, uh, speech about, I guess it was supposed to be good news. But it's not good news because we're still going through a nightmare. He spoke of how they opened up the waiting list and, um, you know, okay, fine, great. But the fact of the matter is before there was Corona, I had to wait 21 years to even get off the waiting list. Even clearly on top of now the Corona crisis. And even though he said it, I'm confused because nobody even asked him any questions and referenced to, okay, you're opening it, but what does that look like? How many people do you have on the list? How fast is this going to move through? Because there's a lot of situations going on and a lot of people are saying a lot of things and promising the world and actually giving people nothing but a lot of mental and physical and emotional strength.
Thank you so much. Um, were you finished?
And I have a lot more to say, but because of this echo that I'm getting and I'm trying to.
Well, Ms. Matthews, we should probably.
No, I really wasn't finished. I would like for Mr. Garrett, if nothing else, to be able to talk about the updates with Berry Farm.
Sure. Why don't we give Mr. Garrett an opportunity to do so now?
I'm going to, Commissioners, um, and, and.
And I would like a continuous update every time. And I would like for update to be done every time y'all have a monthly meeting.
Okay. All right. Let's give Mr. Garrett an opportunity to respond. Thank you so much, Ms. Matthews.
Okay, Commissioners, um, we're still working through on, I think they're going to still try to meet the deadline for the, um, funding source to begin and continue with demolition at, um, Berry Farm. Um, but that's the extent of it to the, to this particular point. Um, nothing major to report. But based on what Ms. Matthews has asked for and, um, Mr. Chair, we can try and figure out a way to give uh, monthly reports on Berry Farm, um, to the public, um, in addition to the, the board of commissioners during Dev Mod. Um, and I just need to correct the record just for something. I misspoke when I said open, um, the waiting list. What I meant to say was pulling from the waiting list. I apologize. Uh, we haven't opened the waiting list, um, but we are pulling from the waiting list, um, for single, single family units or single occupancy units for, um, 200, um, 200 individuals or 200 families.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Uh, let's move on. Uh, Gabrielle Davis. Ms. Davis.
Ms. Davis, you can press star six on your phone.
Uh.
Ms. Davis. I would move on, Mr. Chair.
Hey, uh, next is Contessa Allen Starks. First, we can able to identify Ms. Allen Starks.
Ms. Starks, if you want to press star six on your phone to join us. Ms. Ms. Starks, if you want to press star six.
Uh, let's move on to Darlene James. Uh, Darlene Jameson.
Ms. Jameson, if you want to press star six on your phone.
Yeah, hello?
Yeah, hello?
Yes.
Yeah.
He's here, correct. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, could you identify yourself, the record, and then, uh, provide your testimony? Hello? This is, uh, I'm, I'm not sure you did a great job accommodating our guest today.
Trying my best, sir. Caller ending in phone number six nine. Caller phone number ending in, if you want to unmute yourself, star six.
All right, let's, um, maybe, maybe Scott Brown will be the charm.
Yes, here I am. I am the charm.
Welcome, Scott.
Um, hey, everyone. Um, my name's Scott Brown. Um, I live on Park Road, just a, a block down from Park Morton. Um, and I've been organizing alongside Park Morton residents as part of our community mutual effort since March. Um, I'm here to voice my support for Ms. Shanta Hi and all Park Morton residents and their ask to work alongside them to revise the terms of the Park Morton PUD to ensure that their redevelopment actually meets their needs and visions that they've laid out in the Park Morton Equity Plan. Um, as you may have heard, ANC 1A and Ward 1, which includes Park Morton, recently passed a resolution in full support of the Park Morton Equity Plan. After extensive discussions with residents and community organizers, I would say after over 13 years of delays, DCHA Board of Commissioners can assured commit to a similar process to pause, reflect and listen to those most impacted by your decisions to make the changes that they're asking for. Park Morton residents have been asking for years now to be given more of a say over their own homes and community. In the Park Morton Equity Plan created by the Park Morton Residence Council, residents paint a picture of a future where Park Morton residents are given a real seat at the table in designing their new community, not just through community meetings or feedback forms, but through being awarded rights as a development partner and being given equity in the project. This is not just some pipe dream. Right down the road from Park Morton at Columbia Heights Village, the tenants' association has had a partial ownership of their property since 2017. This transition has allowed tenants to feel empowered to advocate for their needs as a partner at the table with the other owners and to know that they have real access to the resources and levers of power to get their needs met. In DCHA's strategic goals listed on your website, your first goal is to create opportunities to improve the quality of life for DCHA residents through collaboration and partnerships. Imagine how powerful it would be to live out this goal, collaboration and partnership with residents of the Park Morton community. Not just treating them as names on a list, but as human beings with dreams of owning homes, building up generational wealth and stability for their families, including sustainable, healthy communities where they shape their own realities. As you know, delays in the Bruce Monroe Build First Project have led to residents being pressured to leave Park Morton with vouchers and move all over the city or even outside the city. Sixty out of 147 units remain filled at Park Morton and more families are moving out every week. Some of these families got tired of living in multi-broken down apartments with little maintenance and no start to redevelopment in sight. Some families literally received notices, sometimes multiple times from DCHA, telling them they had to leave the property despite promises in public meetings from DCHA that no one was being forced to move. And DCHA would later claim these notices were erroneous.
Twenty seconds.
Thank you. Please slow down and take this moment to recognize the harms that have been done through delays, broken promises and intimidation of residents in the last 13 years and commit to take action to address them. Commit to giving decision makers from DEMPED, DCHA and the DC Council to meet with the Park Morton Residence Council and reach agreements on modifications to the PUD for Park Morton that all parties agree to, especially the residents most impacted by these decisions. Thank you.
Scott, thank you so much for your testimony today. And you are indeed the charm. Uh, let's see if we can go back using that charm to Darlene Jameson.
Ms. Jameson, if you're still on, please press star six on your phone.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, this is Darlene Jameson. I'm a resident of Berry Farms. How are you?
Doing well. Thanks for your testimony today.
I never gave it because I was cut off.
Oh, no, we, we, we can receive it now.
Yes, I'm a resident of Berry Farms and I moved in Berry Farms in 2001. Berry Farm means a lot to me because as a young teenager, that was my hangout spot. All my friends lived in Berry Farms. And I need for DC Housing Authority and the zoning commissioners and all of that to put the Berry Farm family back where they belong and that is in Southeast Anacostia on the Berry Farm property. We are so excited to come back because I represent as the ambassador for the residents of Berry Farms who kept in compliance with their leases. And I'm here to say as a proud Berry Farm resident, I am so excited about the demolition. And now I need to see that first building, which is the senior building, to go through and, and get built so that the Berry Farm residents can start coming back home. We belong there. We love it there and that's where we belong. So I need all the entities and the corporations and the, uh, developers and public housing, DC Housing Authority and whatever entities it is to get this thing back on the ball rolling. Because it's a wonderful, wonderful, beautiful, um, development that we are, um, looking forward to and I'm so excited. So if there's ever anything Darlene Jameson can do for DC Housing Authority or the developers to help move this thing along so that we can get back home, you just call me and let me know.
Thank you so much for your testimony and your support.
And I want to let Mr. Garrett know that he is doing a wonderful job. I am so impressed with his character and his determination to make DC Housing Authority and the DC area one of the best. And he's doing a great job and he got the right people behind him because I'm behind him. All the Berry Farm residents, we are very pleased with his progress. But we need to kick back to Berry Farms and get all of the development going in the right direction.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Um, Contessa Allen Starks.
Ms. Starks, if you're on, please star six. Please press star six on your phone to unmute. Good, sir.
All right, I think this starts having, having difficulty, um, connecting, uh, today. Those were, that was the, the only issue on, for our discussion today was resolution 2020. We appreciate everyone's comments and inputs. Uh, on, uh, that issue and other issues, I want to tell you that our executive director and his team, they do take your suggestions and inputs seriously and will follow up, uh, with you. Our next board of commissioners meeting will be held Wednesday, December 9, 2020 at 1:00 PM. Again, we'll do it via WebEx. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at our website, dchousing.org. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. We'll see you next month. Take care, everyone.